Thank you colleagues, who may be seated.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the council. Due to unforeseen circumstances, in accordance with the council's constitution, I'm deputising for councillor parts for this evening's council. May I also warmly welcome representatives who are present in person in the gallery today, as well as those watching from home or work in light of this meeting being recorded and livestreamed. If any members of the public or press would like to record proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind them, and sitting in the council chamber, leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the front of the town hall? Staff will assist with this. May I also ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbances, please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are turned off during the meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items, please should use the microphones provided. Please remember to switch microphones to on when speaking and also to switch them off when you're not speaking. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and must be invited to speak. All of the councillors must remain silent whilst another member is speaking. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting, and we should always demonstrate behaviour that's respectful and courteous. Members are also reminded that this extraordinary meeting will deal only with the business that is set out in the summons, and that the ordinary meeting of Borough Council will take place at the rising of this meeting. I must remind members that under the provision of the Local Government Act 1972, it will be necessary to have a formal vote on the motion, so that there is certainty, as the resolution must be passed, by not less than two thirds of the members voting. Members will therefore be asked whether they agree, disagree, or wish to abstain from the vote. We will record the outcome of the vote and announce it at the meeting. I've received apologies from councillor Potts and councillor Thompson. Any members aware of any further apologies? Councillor Kennedy?
Councillor Tulloway.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Councillor McKeon?
Thank you. Neil Maxwell and Catherine Maxwell will be attending from 6pm.
Everything then, we'll carry on. Before we start, does any member wish to make any declarations before we move on to the main item of business? Councillor Carter?
Thank you. I wish to declare a personal interest in item two, in that I am an acquaintance of Richard. As this is a personal interest only, I am not required to leave the meeting, and I can take part in any discussion and vote. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon?
Yep, thank you. Mr Deputy Mayor, I also wish to declare a personal interest, in that I am also an acquaintance of Richard, who is detailed in item two. As this is a personal interest only, I am not required to leave the meeting, and I can take part in any discussion and vote. Thank you.
Next councillor Forman?
Yeah, declaring interest as a member of the Pension Committee, as is the report on the Pension Committee, and as a member of the Pension...
You'll do it again the next time as well. Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I declare in a personal interest, as I am acquainted with both Jade Thurlwell and Richard Oard. This is a personal interest, so I understand that I can take part in the debate and voting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Anybody else? Nope. So the only items of business today at this specially convened meeting is to consider two proposals in accordance with section 249, part five of the Local Government Act 1972, the honorary freedom of the borough. Firstly, the council hereby agree... Does the council hereby agree to bestow upon Jade Thurlwell the honorary freedom of the borough, in recognition of her outstanding contribution as a cultural ambassador and her ongoing commitment to South Tyneside? The freedom of the borough is the highest honour the council can grant. So I'll ask councillor Dixon, leader of the council, to move the motion. The motion will then be open to debate. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Being granted the freedom of the borough is the highest honour to be bestowed on any individual or organisation, and I trust that you will agree that Jade Thurlwell could not be more deserving for the marvellous tribute that our council can give. Jade has played a major role in the social activism, charity work and the culture of South Tyneside residents. In 2020, Jade sponsored the first golden heart in the Customs House Heart of the House fundraising campaign, which raised over £20,000. Jade has also generously donated her stage clothes to raise money for Cancer Connections. She is also a patron of Cancer Connections and has been for many years, and has participated in the Boxing Day Dip almost every year since it began in 2006. And again, typically, this raises over tens of thousands of pounds that Jade actually donates to Cancer Connections. Jade is the honorary president for South Shields Football Club, taking on the role in August 2020, raising the club's profile nationally and internationally. Jade supports the club's charitable foundation and is passionate about using her platform to tackle issues like racism, sexism and homophobia in sport. That in pursuance of section 249, subsection five of the Local Government Act 1972, the council hereby admit Jade Thurlwell as an honorary freedom of the borough in recognition of her contribution to the culture and civic life of South Tyneside residents. Mr Deputy Mayor, can I move that that's agreed? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dixon, is that seconded? Would you like to speak on that councillor Porthaus? Do any other members wish to speak on this? Councillor Francis?
Thank you. I'm not sure what to call you in this meeting, but thank you anyway. I've said this in relation to previous Freedom of the Borough nominations that have come in, and I'm always mindful of the optics when we're doing something at a cost. You know, this cost is associated with the events that take place to commemorate the freedom of the borough, and so I hope it will be possible to either look at combining the two nominations into a single event, or to... for members to forego any catering costs that might be associated with them attending, if these are voted through tonight, or indeed for members possibly to contribute to cover their own costs as well. That said, because of the age I am, my awareness of youth culture stopped in about 1996, so I'm aware of Jade primarily not through her music, but because of the work that she's done both locally and on a wider scale, using her platform to speak out and amplify the voices of the marginalised, challenging amongst other things the politics of hate and division, welfare cuts, the silencing of protest and the selling of arms, and indeed her speaking up in support of LGBTQ plus community, for trans rights, support of Black Lives Matter and raising awareness of the conflicts in Yemen and Palestine. And of course locally, she owns a venue and contributes to the hospitality sector, offering employment as well, and of course we've heard about her support for the Customs House and local charities. And Jade of course has also spoken out against online hate and trolling, and she was quoted after her Glastonbury performance in an interview saying, "I was ready for a backlash from the right kind of people." And I've always admired people with the courage to speak up when they know that some very vocal people won't like what they have to say. But I'm always in admiration of people who put principles ahead of popularity and who are bold rather than bland. That kind of thing makes me proud of our area and our community and our spirit, so I'm pleased to support this tonight.
Thank you councillor. Do any other members wish to speak on this? Okay. So colleagues, as this item requires a vote, I will now ask the monitoring officer to read out the name of each member in alphabetical order and ask how they would wish to vote.
So councillor Barclay?
Four.
Councillor Brennan?
Four.
Councillor Brown? Councillor Carter?
Four.
Councillor Clare?
Four.
Councillor Coombs?
Four.
Councillor Cunningham?
Four.
Councillor Davies?
Four.
Councillor Dawes?
Four.
Councillor Peady?
Four.
Councillor Estine?
Four.
Councillor Dixon?
Four.
Councillor Ellison?
Four.
Councillor Foggan?
Abstained.
Councillor Ford?
Four.
Councillor Forman?
Four.
Councillor Francis?
Four.
Councillor Gibson?
Councillor Gillen?
Four.
Councillor Hamilton?
Against.
Councillor Herbert?
Four.
Councillor Keegan?
Four.
Councillor Kennedy?
Four.
Councillor Lamont?
Four.
Councillor McCabe?
Four.
Councillor McHugh?
Four.
Councillor McEwen?
Four.
Councillor Malling?
Four.
Councillor Myers?
Four.
Councillor Owens-Pomer?
Four.
Councillor Porthaus?
Four.
Councillor Proudlock?
Four.
Councillor Keith Roberts?
Against.
Councillor Robertson?
Against.
Councillor Smith?
I'd rate him well. Sorry, apologies, I should have crossed that one.
Right, sorry. Yeah. Apologies, mistake on the sheet. So councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Stonehouse?
Four.
Councillor Strike?
Four.
Councillor Jay Taylor?
Four.
Councillor R Taylor?
Four.
Councillor Traynor?
Four.
Councillor Welsh?
Four.
Councillor Wood?
Four.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Yea as well. Oh, that's quite magnificent, thank you. Councillor Yeh?
Four, thank you.
Colleagues, we have 38 votes in favour, three votes against and two abstentions, so the motion is agreed to bestow the honorary freedom of the borough upon Jade Thurlwell. Hey colleagues, moving on. Secondly, does the council hereby agree to bestow upon Richard Oard MBE, owner of Coleman's Fish and Chip Restaurant and the Seafood Temple, the honorary freedom of the borough in recognition of his exceptional entrepreneurship, philanthropy and services to the hospitality industry in South Tyneside? As previously stated, the freedom of the borough is the highest honour the council can grant. So I'll ask councillor Dixon, leader of the council, to move the motion. The motion will then be open to debate. Councillor Dixon?
Yep, thank you again, Mr Deputy Mayor. And as already been mentioned, being granted the freedom of the borough is the highest honour to be bestowed on any individual or organisation, and I trust that you will agree that Richard Oard could not be more deserving of this marvellous tribute that our council can give. Colleagues, Mr Oard is renowned for his entrepreneurship, his philanthropy and his community spirit. Mr Oard, the fourth generation of his family to operate Coleman's Fish and Chips, has a focus on... has a focus on system... Put my teeth in? On sustainability and the environment, which has resulted in Coleman's being the first MSC certified fish and chip shop in England. Richard Oard has made significant contributions to the borough of South Tyneside, particularly through his work in hospitality, tourism and community regeneration. Richard was awarded an MBE in the Queen's New Year's Honours for his services to the hospitality industry and the regeneration in South Tyneside. He's the owner of Coleman's Fish and Chips and Coleman's Seafood Temple, a family business dating back to 1905. Under his leadership, Coleman's became the first MSC certified sustainable fish and chip shop in England, winner of the Good Catch Award and a nationally recognised destination for seafood lovers. In 2017, Richard transformed the derelict Gandhi Temple in South Shields, which is located on the beach, into the award-winning Coleman's Seafood Temple, boosting tourism and local pride. He's advocated for sustainable sustainability in the fish and chip industry, trained hundreds of young chefs and fryers through an open door policy, sharing expertise and raising industry standards. His family businesses support local initiatives, including the sponsorship of the likes of Customs House Theatre and its pantomimes, and donations and sponsorships of local football teams and charities. That in pursuance of section 249 subsection five of the Local Government Act 1972, the council hereby admit Richard Oard as the honorary freedom of the borough in recognition of his outstanding contribution to cultural, civic, hospitality and regeneration projects here in South Tyneside for our residents. Can I ask that this is agreed? Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon, is that seconded? Would you like to speak on that councillor Porthouse? Do any other members wish to speak?
Chair, I just wanted to say, I know Tracy stole a couple of me things there I was going to say, but Richard about sustainability, I've been a councillor for many years, over 20 odd years and Richard has been an asset in this town, bringing jobs for some, prosperity, giving them work. But sustainability has been an asset. With working with the Coastal SIG and other coastal groups, working along the coast, he's enhanced it about educational aspect as well. If you go down to the seafront, you'll see the big fish, about the recyclable, putting single-use plastics or other objects in from the beach recycling. But also, we promoted with single-use plastics. I know David Francis and them often raised it about single-use plastics, but Richard was one of the first along the seafront to introduce it. He's been an asset for the environment and sustainability, and sustainability for the fishing industry. I would like to congratulate him and he's a true gent and he's inspirational for the town.
Do any other members wish to speak councillor Roberts? Robertson, you got a hand up there? Yep.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got nothing against each of the two nominations personally, but when you look on the council's website and you read the people that's been given the freedom of the borough and how prestigious it is, you're now starting to give them out like Greg's pasties, right? And to me, you need to have a look at why you're singling out certain people. You know, have they done good things but it's only been a short period of time and they've got time for their life to flourish? In five years' time, they could be awarded it, 10 years' time, they could be awarded it. And then there's other people where we're saying they've done this, that and the other. Well, you know, we can name dozens of businessmen in South Tyneside that's done good things, that's employed people, that's done things for the council, with the council. So other people have been put forward and they've been turned down by the Labour group. Now, I'm not making an accusation, it's an inquiry. It does concern us that one of these tends to be, or I'm led to believe, is potentially a Labour donor, a Labour Party member. So all of these should be declaring an interest, not just them three that's declaring an interest. All of the Labour group should be declaring an interest in not voting on this. Yep? Thank you very much.
Councillor Ginn, did you have your hand up there as well? No? Or councillor Davies, sorry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I'd just like to reflect a younger person's experience of Coleman's. The fact that there are two very high-profile content creators that Richard and his team have brought to South Shields, Gary Eats and Kalani Ghosthunter, and their international reach continues to put South Shields on the map. It showcases our fantastic seafront and again, the fantastic work that he does on sustainability in the hospitality sector.
Do you have any other members who wish to speak on this? Councillor Lisk?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you. I too, I think Richard Oard is a very good candidate. For years, and I mean years, from being a little boy, he took that job which was, in our memory, not up to much and he has built it up and he has given us a wonderful reputation all over this country for the quality of what he sells and it brings in a lot of people just for that alone. And I support the award to Richard Oard very, very much. As for Jade, who I've known all my life, all her life I should say, she could only be... She could only know us all my life. She's a lovely girl, lovely girl, wonderful singer and I absolutely adore her. But I do agree, I think she's too young. I just think that she's got many, many years ahead of her, she's got so much talent and this is the accolade of a lifetime's work. And it's not that I don't think she deserves it in the end, because I think she will, I just think that she's a bit too young. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Roberts?
It's just that, just to follow on from what councillor Dixon said and councillor Gibson, of all the great work he's done, he's donated this, he's donated that, the one thing they forgot to say was, he denied his fish and chips to the meetings when they have there all the time. Mr Milliband, you forgot that a little bit.
Right, we'll move on. So colleagues, this item requires a vote, so I'll ask the monitoring officer to read out the name of each member in alphabetical order and ask how they wish to vote.
Councillor Barclay?
Four.
Councillor Brennan?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
Abstain.
Councillor Carter?
Four.
Councillor Clare?
Four.
Councillor Coombs?
Four.
Councillor Cunningham?
Four.
Councillor Davies?
Four.
Councillor Pedine?
Four.
Councillor Estine?
Four.
Councillor Dixon?
Four.
Councillor Ellison?
Four.
Councillor Foggan?
Against.
Councillor Ford?
Four.
Councillor Forman?
Four.
Councillor Francis?
Four.
Councillor Gibson?
Four. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Councillor Ginn?
Four.
Councillor Hamilton?
Against.
Councillor Herbert?
Four.
Councillor Keegan?
Councillor Kennedy?
Against.
Councillor Kilgawa?
Four.
Councillor Lamont?
Four.
Councillor Lisk? Four. Councillor McCabe?
Four.
Councillor McKeew?
Four.
Councillor McCowan?
Four.
Councillor Melling?
Four.
Councillor Myers? Councillor Owens Palmer? Councillor Porthouse?
Four.
Councillor Proudlock?
Four.
Councillor Keith Roberts?
Against.
Councillor Robertson?
Against.
Councillor Stonehouse?
Abstain.
Councillor Strike?
Four.
Councillor Jay Taylor?
Four.
Councillor R Taylor? Councillor Traynor?
Four.
Councillor Welsh?
Four.
Councillor Wood?
Against.
Councillor Yeh?
Abstain.
On the vote?
I didn't get a response of the mountain officer when I said about the conflicts of interest. Can I get an answer please?
Let me just check that.
Before the vote gets counted.
Councillors, they're free to make their decision for declaration of interest at the beginning and everyone has done. Hey colleagues, with 31 votes in favour, five against, sorry, eight against, five abstentions, the motion is agreed to bestow the honorary freedom of the borough upon Richard Oard MBE. Finally, could I just ask that all elected members and officers remain seated. Remind members a full council meeting will begin at 6pm, which is... Two minutes time. You can have a two-minute break before we start.